Gray?
Here.
Jerem?
Here.
Stothard?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Festerston?
Here.
Gurnett?
Here.
Mr. President?
Please stand for our nation's pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilman Verstappen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two prayers today. First of all, for the folks that live on the eastern seaboard as the cleanup begins, our thoughts and prayers are with those who are affected by Hurricane Sandy and thankful for the loss of life. It was not worse, but the destruction was devastating. And so, as the recovery and rescue starts, our prayers are with those folks. But I also found a prayer today I wanted to read, and it's about the upcoming election. A week from today will be the election, so I'd like to read this. Let us give pause for a moment of thanks. Let's give thanks for the men and women who committed themselves to establish a new nation in which voting was possible. Let us give thanks for the courage of women of the suffrage movement who pioneered the path to the Nineteenth Amendment and ensured women the right to vote. And let us give thanks for those who risked and sacrificed their lives to pass the Voting Rights Act of 1965 to allow our citizens, regardless of color their skin, to vote. We also pray for forgiveness, that there are still some in our country whose votes are not allowed to be cast or counted. Even in recent elections, we pray for protection of all the voters and the votes of this coming election. We also pray for the candidates, their family and their staff, who have worked tirelessly to offer to the country a vision of the future they deeply believe in. Give them rest and sense of peace, no matter what the outcome of the election. We pray for all the citizen volunteers who have made democracy better by their work on this election campaign. And so, today we also pray for those who will vote differently than we do for their own reasons already deeply rooted in faith. And we pray, despite the outcome of the election, that we will find ways to build bridges and work together for the common good of the country we all dwell in. And mayor votes next week be guided less by a fear of our neighbor and more by a hope for the future. Amen.
Two amens.
City Clerk, Service Side Publication Daily Record, on October 26th, noted as very pre-council and regular city council meeting, October 30th, 2012. A current copy of the openings act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on our published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Ordinance on final reading, Ray Bonds, item number five. Ordinance authorizing approving and the establishment of a master lease purchase program for the police cruiser acquisition, authorizing and approving separate lease purchase agreement between the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation and the City of Omaha.
The public hearing on agenda item number five was held on October 23rd, 2012. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero.
Zoning ordinance on final reading and planning board attachments, item number six. Ordinance to rezone property located at 1130 South 30th Avenue from R7 to R4 Single Family Residential District, high density, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six begins now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
Hi, Michelle Roy, 1126 South 30th Avenue. I'm one of the property owners and I'm here in case anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number seven, ordinance to rezone property located at 2808 South 40th Street from R4 to R5 Urban Family Residential District, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven begins now. Please state your name and address.
Jim Cosgrove, 12107 Lisa Circle, Omaha.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number eight, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, to incorporate in that district the property located at 5500 L Street, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Your turn, sir.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Jim Lang, 11718 Nicholas Street, representing the applicant. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. We'll take items nine and 10 together. Nine is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-1 PL District, to incorporate into that district the property located generally between I-480 and South 45th Street, between Leavenworth Street and Harney Street. Ten is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-2 PL District, to incorporate in that district the properties located generally between Saddle Creek Road and South 45th Street and between Leavenworth Street and Douglas Street, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number nine and 10 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Jed Moulton of the Planning Department. Next two items are part of the continuing effort to implement the ACI zoning. I'm here to answer any questions for you. The ACI is supplemental zoning to existing zoning to cover provisions that weren't previously met with respect to building design quality and pedestrian environments and other provisions. It only applies at the time of redevelopment, so all properties are grandfathered until a new development is occurring.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
There's two of them here. Good afternoon. My name is Bill Stowell and I live at 1528 Pepperwood Drive, and I own a property on 35th and Leavenworth that's part of this ACI. I also should mention that I work as an associate broker at NAI MP Dodge, and I work in the commercial industrial real estate. And I'm speaking obviously in opposition to this today. My first run-in with ACI was about two years ago. I had a group of people looking to do an assemblage of lots on Dodge Street at about 45th on the south side. Turns out that this was in an ACI zoning area. When the principals started looking at the master plan and then they overlaid that with the ACI zoning, they opted not to do it and they just left and made their investments elsewhere. Subsequent to that, I own the property that the Mother India Restaurant is on, and the owner of that, Joe D'Souza, asked if he could do a little 10 by 12-foot bump out to do more seating. Now, that building is only 20 by 30 feet. He's operating in 600 square feet, and if he could have had a little more seating, he could have been able to handle more customers. To do the feasibility, I hired an architect who came back and said, "By the time you're done, it's going to be $300,000." I was shocked. Obviously, there was no way that that was going to work, so my efforts there were thwarted. The master plan and these ACI overlays and the taxes and the ordinances, they all go together. The perception that I'm seeing from my side, now you guys may not see this, but I see this, is that Omaha, as a government, is hostile to business development and is hostile to real estate development. It's just too difficult to do a project and fight through the project and at the same time have to fight city planning. So, if you look around, you'll see that projects are happening west and north and south because you can go and you can do them without having planning get in your face. And you can get permits done in a reasonable time, and they're cooperative, they'll work with you. It plays a big part. If you notice that, I'm sure you've noticed this population is decreasing in Omaha and businesses are leaving, and we can quote the numbers on that. The problem that I see the way it is, is that the way the master plan is set up and with this ACI overlay, if you're coming in here and you're a CVS or you're a First National Bank, Walgreens, or an entity with deep pockets, you're good to go. All right? You can go do it. And I've talked with architects and engineers, those guys will pay the money. But how about the medium guys, like me, who want to put in a little addition on a building and we bump into this master plan and this ACI overlay, it just makes it impossible. The result is, you're taking away the economic viability of the city because there's a lot more of these guys that are walking away than you see. I see them on a weekly basis. People will call me about stuff, and they elect not to do it in Omaha, they'll do it elsewhere because they can get by with it. This is a good time for you to stop, to pause, to reconsider the direction you're taking with this onerous oversight on real estate in Omaha. Open it up and let people do what they want to do. I would suggest an addendum to the master plan that says, if you give a neighborhood where you get the proponents of the people that want a project to go through, that in itself should be enough to override planning and get permits issued post haste. Yeah, you're going to have ungainly projects and you're going to have ugly buildings from time to time, but you'll have a lot more buildings. The ugly ones in due time go away. Those that are economically viable and have architectural value will stay and will become part of the fabric. As you talk to planning, they'll tell you that this master plan is set up to make Omaha a very pretty city in 50 or 100 years. Well, how about the people that are living here now and paying taxes now and voting now? Shouldn't they have some say in what happens in their neighborhoods? I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Please state your name and address.
Jim Cosgrove, 12107 Lisa Circle. Have a question on the University of Nebraska, I understand, is buying up the south side of Leavenworth Street up to 38th, or the north side. What does this have to do with the south side?
Sir, does this pertain to these two agenda items?
Yes, 3805 Leavenworth. 3805 at Leavenworth Street.
Okay.
That's on the south side. I understand the University of Nebraska is buying up the north side of Leavenworth Street up to 38th Street, but it doesn't say anything about the south side.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard?
Thank you. Jed from Planning, could you come back up? Say her name again.
Jed Moulton, Planning Department.
Could you address Mr. Stowell's concerns? I think he had some very valid concerns that he expressed, and I'd just like you to address them.
Sure.
And also, I guess before you do that, maybe explain the need for an ACI.
The ACI zoning resulted from the urban design master plan, which was a lengthy public process that did include considerable amount of feedback and input from citizens of Omaha about the future physical form of the city. So, when I do my job, I see myself as upholding the objectives of the citizens of Omaha as well. So, we recognize that development is difficult in certain parts of the city. I would like to clarify whether or not it's as a result of the ACI or just as a result of doing redevelopment in older parts of the city, Leavenworth area in particular. It is particularly challenging, and oftentimes the ACI would add extra requirements for the design and the quality of the building. So, in that regard, it may put some burden on development. It doesn't necessarily prohibit development, doesn't prohibit additions. I'm curious to know about the example of Mother India. There's nothing about that project that would be prohibited from an ACI point of view. The addition could happen, and it could even be compatible and similar to the existing building. Additions are accommodated easily. It's major redevelopments when we come in is when we probably has the most impact. Examples were cited, the CBS or Walgreens, something like that. So, there's a lot of factors at play, and oftentimes the ACI is kind of the go-to problem, but I haven't really found it to exhibit the real impact that people are talking about. The need for the zoning is that the basic zoning that we have in certain parts of town is rather blunt, and it's not very refined with respect to improving the public environment of the street and providing some minimum thresholds for building design quality. So, you could have next to Midtown Crossing or in a historic neighborhood, some very incompatible industrial-style buildings being built without any minimum threshold for design quality. So, the ACI sets the minimum threshold that didn't previously exist, and it also attempts to rehabilitate the sidewalk areas and make sure that there's wide enough sidewalks and street trees and proper lighting. So, did I answer your question?
Somewhat, but I mean, this is all about the urban design codes, like you said.
Yeah.
But to his point, and to your point too, this causes extra requirements to be made as far as design and quality, so essentially it could, and I'm sure it does, cause the developers to have to pay more to either redesign or remodel or rehabilitate in that area.
Right.
And that would be true, right?
It would be true, yes.
And then also, these design codes, I mean, they're just, they're a guide, aren't they? They're not written in stone, so...
They are codified. There's minimum qualities of materials. There's materials that you use for your building are kind of defined into two groups, you know, which, those materials you can use as a primary material and those which are complementary. So, we have been, I should say, we've reviewed over 200 projects since the code was put in place, and in only two examples that I could cite was development, the development not happened because of the ACI. They felt it was too onerous and they ended up going somewhere else. In most cases, we can help the project come into conformance of the code rather easily. I think, you know, we're here to assist people understand what those requirements are, and there's a lot of flexibility in how you interpret and apply them to the project. So, they don't necessarily prohibit the project. It's a matter of working with the planning department, working with the applicant, finding the right solution for the project.
So, you think that the problem could be not necessarily in the code itself, but the way it's applied?
I think it might be the way that people understand it or do not understand it. If we're not contacted, we can't clarify it. I think sometimes people look at the code and not ask any questions or try to understand it further. They might...
I guess the point I'm trying to make is to Mr. Stowell's concerns. So, it does allow flexibility, though. If the developer comes to you and says, "This is costing me a lot more than it would have otherwise and work with me on this," then it allows that flexibility for you to do that.
It allows us to, yes, to provide flexibility. With any code, you can apply for waivers if it's too burdensome or it's a hardship for the project. There is flexibility in terms of how we interpret the code and where, how you design the building. There's a lot of variables there. It's hard to write a code that prescribes the exact design of a building. We don't want to design buildings for people. We want to give them the flexibility to design it, and so I think there is flexibility in there. It does set a minimum threshold, though, and that will impact the project in dollars and cents.
Okay. And then, again, this particular area, why the ACI is needed here, this particular area?
It was identified in the master plan as a key corridor and a key part of the city. All of downtown and major corridors running east, west, and then north and south.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Moulton, before you leave, I just want to paraphrase what you just said. I want to make sure that I've got it right. But what we're basically saying is that this area is so commercially important to the city of Omaha that this is another means of having us ensure that it is commercially developed in a like fashion. Is that correct?
I would say yes. And also, the historic fabric that's in place, the, ensuring that there's compatibility is when future development happens. So, there are a lot of historic buildings. There's a higher-quality building exhibited by Midtown Crossing. The future objectives for that part of town would have a higher quality of building. There's, this area is more susceptible to incompatible development than other areas, I would say.
But yet, is there still enough flexibility that you could work with individual developers if they do have an extenuating circumstance that may prevent them from doing the project like the way the city wants it done?
Yes, there's flexibility in how the code is applied, depending on what the project is done. So, if you're doing addition, we can be clear in how it applies your project and whether or not has, what degree of impact it has. If you're doing a complete redevelopment of a parcel, we can clarify how to apply it and where, what your building design would look like, where the, how you would apportion funds to different parts of the project. So, we can fine-tune the development with the development team to get to maximize their investment. So, they're not spending more than they need to, and they're not jeopardizing the code either. We have three trained architects on staff that work with the development team, so we're well-versed in building design, and we understand where you can save money and how you can design a project so it meets the code.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, I was a little curious regarding the statement that there's no development going on in Midtown. I've been peppered with questions about tax increment financing projects that we've approved for all of the projects that have been going on in Midtown. It's been exhaustive over the last three years, the reviews that have been coming for this council on redevelopment after redevelopment after redevelopment in that area. And I think that there was a statement made that because of the ACI, the addition to the Mother India property was, $300,000, was suspended. There is no ACI right now for 36th and...
Correct.
...Leavenworth. So, what typically we see on projects, and I've faced them myself, from my own property to properties that I've represented clients on, and sometimes you want to do an addition, and perhaps it's a commercial addition, and there's fire code regulations, and there's Class 1 suppression systems that have to go in for kitchens...
Absolutely.
...and there's handicap accessibility issues with regard to restrooms. And the modifications that you have to make to a building that's had grandfather rights for years then all get, because of the ADA and other code requirements, then put on the side burner, and you have to now come up, bring the building up to code. So, first, there's a misstatement, if there's some impression going on that there's no development, a redevelopment in the eastern part and Midtown portion. Second, with regard to the quote "middle guy" or "little guy," there's also a misstatement there in terms of redevelopment, because if you, just in Midtown, look at the piano building project we did on the ACI district in 49th and Dodge, just across the street to the west from, quote, "the big guy," CBS Pharmacy. Look over on 52nd and Leavenworth on the old Wolners Building that was done, that's, quote, "a little guy." 24th and Coming. Further to the east on Park Avenue, Leavenworth, there's more discussions going on and redeveloping that. There's all kinds of projects that people and investors of varying degrees of levels that are pursuing. So, we had a wide, in fact, there's more coming up on the agenda today, the Buc-Ee's. He'd probably be a middle level, going out on ACI area 72nd Dodge, right? That's ACI.
Right.
So, what it does is, and I understand your frustrations, there's probably the most recurring frustration I hear from people in terms of their interaction with city government the past few years, is a sense that maybe the planning department, in some cases, people don't think as development-friendly. It wouldn't be fair to the opponents not to echo the frustrations that I've heard and I think others have told me that they've heard. So, I think that there's things that can be done to make the department more of a partner, rather than the perception by some that there's an obstacle or the big NO that exists. And that administratively is something, hopefully, that the executive branch, the administration can work on. But as far as the ACI, there are good things happening in Midtown. This will make them better. So, I would move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerston?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number 11, ordinance to rezone property located 11111 M Street from GI to CC Community Commercial District, A Planning Board, Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Sandra Watson, and I'm at 3410 Jackson, and I'm the opponent for this fellow that was just sitting here, who just left. Anyway, I'm opposing about the...
Ma'am, these are for the proponents.
Okay.
So, if you want to, if you want to just wait for a moment, you'll get your chance.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
No. Is that what she wants? Ma'am?
Are you for the previous one or the best one?
Speaking of Mike, I knew just...
Well, ma'am, are you here for agenda item number 11?
Yeah, he just left. The guy just took off, that's what I was trying to say, so. I was opposing about the ground-level transparency and how it has its threshold and how was he going to go about trying to help other people to get their property up in that area of significance, important, and what is his interpretation on that ground level?
We've already finished that...
Yeah, I know.
...particular item.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so, once again, we're on agenda item number 11. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number 12, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Whispering Ridge to allow automotive repair services located southeast of West Maple Road and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents?
Jonathan Wakefield, 15995 South Barker's Landing, Houston, Texas. I'm the new store development director for Christian Brothers Automotive. If you have any specific questions about us or our use, certainly be willing to answer those questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item, ordinance on final reading, Plan Board attachments, item number 13, ordinance to amend the South 10th Street Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Plan for the properties located generally along South 10th Street from Pacific on the north to I-80 on the south, along Pierce Street from 10th Street on the west to 5th Street on the east. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Arnold Breslow with the Old Market South Neighborhood Association, here as a proponent.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Arnie. I wanted to just bring you up to acknowledge your hard work on this with many of us and council members, Festerson, for finally, I think, figuring out a pathway to get what everyone in that community wants. And there's been several months of effort, and I wanted to thank you for being so persistent and steadfast. So thanks for all you've done there.
Thanks a lot, and all we're trying to do is help try to build a little better city in the inner core. Thank you.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. We'll take items 14, 15, and 16 together. 14 is resolution Plummer Platinum titled "Buc-E's Crossroad Plaza Edition," located northeast of 78th and Dodge Street. It is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 15 is a resolution to the Platinum titled "Buc-E's Crossroad Plaza Edition," is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 16 is subdivision agreement, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items number 14, 15, and 16 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Matthew Manning, 4973 Dodge Street, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, counselor. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number 17 and 18 go together. 17 is resolution to Platinum titled "Northern Hills Business Park," located northeast of 72nd and Bennington Road, is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 18 is subdivision agreement, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items number 17 and 18 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, here on behalf of the owner and developer. I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 19, resolution special use for application to allow general office in a general industrial district located at 12500 I Street is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Ray Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, simply here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is in my district, in the Benson Business District, and it's a new restaurant, and it's a good, nice renovation and a great upscale place that we're seeking to accomplish here in Benson. Been there a couple of times to eat. So I think it's deserving of support in that regard, but there are issues with the application and the applicant. They're still being sorted out legally, including the option of changing their legal structure and having a new applicant, a new liquor manager as part of this new restaurant. So at this point, that has not occurred yet, or that paperwork has not been forthcoming to city council. So in an effort to keep the application moving for consideration, and on the advice of the city attorney, the best thing to do, I think, today is a motion to deny based on pending legal issues with the applicant. And should they be resolved at the state liquor commission, the city could then drop its opposition to the application. So I would make that motion.
Second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Denied, seven to zero. Item number 21, Burke's Pub, 6117 Maple Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Joe Carmichael, 9811 Calhoun Road, Omaha, applicant.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 22, Harvest Cafe, 16909 Lakeside Hills Plaza Suite 118, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Tom Sawyer, owner, applicant, 7882 South 2163.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 21, Burke's Pub, 6117 Maple Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Joe Carmichael, 9811 Calhoun Road, Omaha, applicant.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. We'll take items 24 and 25 together. It's the same applicant at two locations. It's the Aldi's. Item 24 is Aldi's number 41 at 4525 Dollman Avenue, packaged liquor license, new application, new location. And 25 is Aldi's number 43 at 4801 North 30th Street, packaged liquor license, new location, new location.
Public hearing on agenda items number 24 and 25 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Matt Davis, 1005 Gindel Street, Nixon, Missouri. I'm here representing Aldi.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're both adopted seven to zero. Item number 26 is the Corner Food Mart, 2430 South 24th Street, packaged liquor license. It is new application, old location, and we would have an amendment to amend in a new manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 26 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. I'm appearing here with the applicant, Constant, and his new manager, Storm Pacheco. They're right there to stand. They're here for questions. This application was in front of you a few months ago. It unfortunately got denied at the commission level due to some, I would just say, technicalities and language issues. And so I picked up Constant as a client, and I'm trying to correct that now. You've approved this previously, and I would ask you to do so again. We're here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett.
Mr. Kelly, I just wanted to say thank you for helping out an applicant that seemed to be somewhat confused and didn't have any legal representation in front of the commission. I know that there was a little hard time, first one, applying here, sort of a communication problem, and I've always said, "Give somebody a chance," and I think we ought to do that in this case, especially when there was that communications gap and a technicality kind of pretty much on the commission's side, says, "Well, I'm sorry about that." But again, thank you very much for stepping up and keeping that business open. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The amendment?
The amendment. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Oh, Jerem's out of the chambers. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. As amended. Roll call.
Jerem, or Gray.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted as amended, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 27 through 41 were held on October the 23rd, 2012. Motion to approve. Roll call.
Jerem is back in the chambers. Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Items 27 through 41 are all passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 42 through 47 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, and then identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Items 42 through 47 are adopted, seven to zero. Pursuit to city council rule 7 of agenda items number 48 through 51 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Ordinance on final reading, item number 52, ordinance to amend the Omisso Code Section 30-81 to exclude from the definition of salvage dealer, a person who operates premises used to recycle concrete or reinforced concrete, aids a document submitted by the attorney.
The public hearing on agenda item number 52 is held on October the 23rd, 2012. Mr. Gurnett.
I see that we don't have a planning director. Could someone--
Yes, we do.
--substitute? Chad, would you come forward?
Chad Weaver, City Planning.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, the applicant's clear, or this council is clear. If this passes, can all of the above have the assurance that there's not going to be any negative repercussions if and when the applicant comes forward with an application for a building permit?
Well, they will no longer be required, any of the items that were required previously or as of today for the scrap and salvage dealers license. There are other procedural items they will have to follow, and if they satisfy the code on those items, then they can move forward with their permit.
Okay. But we can be assured that there's not going to be any negative repercussions because of the applicant's request in regards to this amendment to Chapter 30?
We would certainly not seek to punish them for requesting a code change if that's what you're getting at.
Okay.